Roll call.
Chisel.
Here.
Neal. Carlson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Siddergune.
Here.
Hadley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Is there anything or anybody from the public that wants to speak about an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing or carrying none? Consent agenda.
Item A, Minister of July 19, 2021 meeting. Item B, claims. Item C, Resolution 3206, accepting the airport driveway project as complete and authorizing final payment. Item D, change order number two, airport driveway project for $6,388.92. Item E, renewal Class C liquor license for corner bar, including Sunday sales and outdoor service area. And item F, contract with Hinson Consulting for the City Clerk Finance Officer search. Now, I just got that. If you bear with me a minute. I got that late today. And I think the biggest thing to report right now, because I think this timeline can be adjusted and talked about at a later date, but the amount is not to exceed $9,800. So, given all the work that they did for the city manager, it is considerably less. So, it's not to exceed $9,800. Let's see. And, corner bar, the outdoor service area, I have not gotten a sketch from them yet. So, I have no idea what they're, what they're thinking for that outdoor service area. So, I don't know if you want to not approve that piece of it, if you want to take that piece out.
Can we not approve it until they get their sidewalks done?
You mean the whole license?
Yeah.
Well, they are, they're working in conjunction with the Street Department now, though, too.
Well, the Street Department work is, I believe, done. You know, I believe we have worked in good faith, we have talked to them. But I don't believe that we've heard that the contract is in place or any real forward progress. So, I'm wondering if we can withhold the liquor license until such a time that there's actually, is the potential for an outdoor service area?
And is, is there, has there been a change in ownership, ownership of that?
I can't speak to that.
No, there hasn't.
Okay.
In, in terms of that, Ross, I don't think that that's going to be a valid reason for Iowa, the Iowa Beverage Division to approve the license. We're actually just giving a recommendation. They're the ones that actually issued the license. And I would, I don't think that to not approve and not recommend approval of the actual license, based on that, is probably not going to be a reason for them to not approve that license. Now, the outdoor service area portion of it, yeah. So, I think you can.
We can withhold that because it's part of a project that we haven't seen a scoop of.
We need to see that.
Besides, I don't have a sketch anyway.
Can I just request that we pull this off the consent agenda then? Since we're going to modify this, is that what we need to do, right?
I don't think you need to do that, but you can.
If we're going to, if we're going to modify the outdoor service area?
I think you can just say.
Okay.
That you put the consent agenda minus that outdoor service area for corner bar. But you can take it off if you want to.
No, 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 I'm fine, I'm fine, as long as you, you think that that's fine.
I'm just, I'm just a little curious, though, too, when is their license up? And if we delay them, you know, too long, will that harm their business? I mean, I, you know, I mean, it's, it's two weeks and they're still in their timeline, fine. But if they're going to lose their license over a question about their outdoor service area, I don't know if I want to.
Okay, they don't have an outdoor service area now.
Right.
So, so I can approve the license, but deny the outdoor service area? I mean, we have that option, we'll just say the outdoor service area has not been approved.
I don't know if I want to take off the, their request for a Class C liquor license. But I think I would like to nix the outdoor service area until we have a map.
Well, I can't approve it without a map.
You can't, okay.
So, even, even if you approved the whole thing tonight, I have to deny that piece because I don't have a sketch.
Okay.
So, I could move to approve the consent agenda. Item E, we're eliminating the outdoor service area so they can have their liquor license, including Sunday sales, but no outdoor service.
Yeah.
Second, Lewis.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Siddergune.
Aye.
Okay, renew Class C liquor license for Roscoe's, including Sunday sales and outdoor service area?
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Smutsler. He has a, some comments on this for you.
We've had several instances of underage drinking and some services going on at Roscoe's Bar. Recently, we've tried to talk to the owners and see what we could do to rectify it instead of slapping them with restrictions. We haven't seen much change in their behavior over a couple of months. So, I went to find out when their liquor license renewal was up, and that's when I found out it's up. So, I just wanted to take it off the consent agenda so I could talk to the council before you made your decision. I'm not saying waive it, I'm not saying pass it, I just want to give you an education on some things that we're aware of that you might not be. It started early in the year, back in January. I was made aware of an instance where high school kids were being served alcohol in the establishment. I understand college kids go out and drink, I understand it's tough to tell the difference between a 19, 20-year-old and a 21-year-old, but when they're serving high school kids, that's where we stepped in, bought the owners and said, bought the owners into the police department and said, "You have to do a better job of policing them. You've got to post somebody at the door checking IDs, use wristbands, use markers, whatever you need to do, we can't have this continue." That was on January 27th that we had that meeting. Since then, I've got numerous alcohol violations and calls for service from the bar. Recently, we had Nordic Fest. Officers went over to do a bar check, the bar was packed on one of the nights, and they had one person working, serving drinks, and that was it, nobody checking IDs. And it doesn't seem like they're doing anything to help improve the situation of underage drinking. On another occasion recently, we pulled people from in, from out of that bar that were from out of state. So, the bar's got a reputation of a place to come to if you want to drink underage. So, I just want to make sure we're doing all we can to shore things up at that bar.
When you say numerous, can you tell us about how many you're talking about?
On January 16th, we pulled a young man out, or a minor out, who had no identification, they'd already served alcohol inside the bar. As we were dealing with that young person, a car hit one of our patrol cars in the parking lot, intoxicated driver. So, we kind of dismissed the issue with the young person, dealt with the drunk driver. On April 9th, bar check, we escorted underage people out. Fight in progress on June 11th, noise complaint, June 25th. Fireworks discharged in the parking lot, June 26th, people fled back into the bar, noise complaint, July 2nd. July 2nd, officers broke up a fight in the parking lot, July 8th, noise complaint. July 11th, bar check, numerous underage people were removed from the bar. July 15th, another noise complaint. July 23rd, reported 19-year-olds drinking in the bar, mixing with out-of-staters, the bar's a reputation for serving underage. July 23rd, disturbance in the parking lot. And July 24th was another one where we spoke to the bar owners that they can't go on like this.
Those are all in 2021?
That's from this year, yeah, from January till now.
Well, that's, that's not a few.
Well, I saw the packet when he held it up.
I saw the packet too and thought, why I asked.
I'd be very hesitant about supporting a liquor license for them, since they're not paying attention to the law.
I, I'm curious if there's anyone here from Roscoe's, I mean, I, I'd be interested in hearing from them if, if they're here. I, I actually tried to go by, when I saw this on the agenda, several times this weekend, I noticed they just weren't open this weekend. And I, I wondered, I don't know why that would be. They weren't open on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which I think they intend to be usually, I think that's their plan. So, I'm wondering if, I, I just wish that we could hear from their perspective also. I, I think that, you know, I think that we should, pulling the liquor license from, from a bar, I mean, it pretty much says you have to go out of business, right? That's, that's the decision.
Aren't they pretty much saying they don't care to do their business by the law?
Well, I, I mean, I'm not sure.
The complaints that we were just reporting.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what they're saying, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of supporting this, I just think it's a very serious, you know, we shouldn't take it lightly at all. And so, I was hoping to hear from them. I tried, I kind of failed to get hold of them.
Again, to be clear, you're just giving a recommendation, it'll be up to ABD whether or not that license is issued.
Sure.
So.
I mean, I was a college kid once, you know, I, we found the bar with the weak spots and we took advantage of it. I, I think that the chief is right to draw a hard red line around them potentially being okay with serving under 18s. And I appreciate that you're making that sort of distinction.
How many lines do you need to draw?
I don't think you're hearing me, Steve.
Is the other question, is it staffing the issue is the problem, that they don't have enough workers? I mean, that would, I would assume if they're not even open on the weekends, that they're having some serious staffing issues. Now, I'm not making excuses for them, but it would be nice if we could talk to the owners to find out what the issue is.
Could we, Chief? I think you've been courteous in using subjectivity on citing and issuing tickets. It sounds like you were issuing verbal warnings and bringing people in to have conversations. Have you actually issued citations to the business for underage?
We've never cited the business, no.
Can you?
We, we, probably for contributory leniency of a minor, we probably could, yep. And just to be clear, when we had the conversation with them in early, in early January, we said, you know, you either police this or we do. And we brought up the fact that the liquor license is in the hand of the city for the vote. So, we told them that if they don't start doing better, that we'll have to take some steps.
I think that, I think that having enforcement, written enforcement in place would, whether or not we, as a council, since we can't approve or deny necessarily, it's a recommendation. I think that hard enforcement, written enforcement that goes on a record, as it goes to the state liquor board, would probably be telling. So, I don't know whether.
Has there ever been, and I don't remember, a liquor license that has come before the council that had the extent of the infractions that this one has?
Not during our council, but I'm sure there.
But there has in the past.
Yeah, it goes back a ways.
And the licenses were issued by the state.
Did you make, did they make a recommendation not to renew it?
Yep. And some of the things that went on there, I think were much, well, I know were much more grievous.
Well, and like I said, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to support the chief's recommendation here. I just want to make sure I understand exactly what the consequences are to the business and the owners. Because I, I don't take lightly telling people that you can't conduct business in decorum. So, I'm curious, if, if, let's say they, they get together with, with the chief and, and y'all or council members or whatever and say, all right, this is the new commitment that we're going to make, we're going to hire outside security. Let's just say they come up with something that, that makes you feel like, hey, maybe we can do a third chance. Can we, can they reapply for a liquor license, or is it kind of a one, once a year thing?
No, I, they can come back and apply. If, if I send this in and say, you know, that we're denying renewal, if ABD, if ABD decides to follow that recommendation, then they will have the opportunity to appeal to them because it's, it's the state that's actually issuing the license. So, they will have a chance to appeal that with the state.
John, if we have listened to public safety and don't, don't deny based on, based on precedents, historical precedents of enforcement and infractions that are noted, do we expose ourselves to any liability?
I'm not 100% certain, it sure raises red flags for me that if the city council is aware of repeated violations, if you don't do anything. Now, I, I've been quickly looking at the city code while you've been discussing this, because this is kind of the first I've heard in detail anything about this. And there, there is a process in here for, for, in the city code, for citing somebody for a municipal infraction. And if, and they would have an opportunity for a hearing before the city council. And then potentially, one of the penalties is revocation of the permit. Now, with that said, like Wanda explained, really, the state controls that, that license. So, I would have to do some research to see, okay, if you have a hearing in front of the city council, give them some due process. And the city council says, no, we don't think you should have a license, what true effect does that have? But I, looking at this, I would want to look at the city code and maybe make a recommendation that the city council follow the city code for notice and an opportunity for a hearing before the council. Now, that doesn't mean you have to vote one way or another tonight, but that may, but following the city code process is another option.
Isn't an option to bring it before the council at the next city council meeting as well? Do some, do some more?
Wait, I, I don't know, when is this due?
I don't have that information in front of me. But I can tell you that if it goes beyond, if, if we don't do anything, and it goes beyond the date of that renewal, the state is going to call and they're going to want to timely file that license. Now, our ordinance says we will not timely file anything. So, I have to kind of argue my way through that with them because it's, it's their practice to just automatically timely file these things.
Does anybody know?
A number of years ago.
What do you mean timely file? File quickly, but like, in this context, it sounds like it's more technical.
Means they've got their, their paperwork into the state, but the city has not acted on it. And so, they consider that timely filed, which means they can continue to operate without that license being formally approved by ABD. But like I said, a number of years ago, the council chose to not allow anyone to timely file. At that time, we were having a problem with people coming in and not getting their stuff done and not getting those renewals done, and so, we were timely filing a lot of them repeatedly. And council at that time said, you know, we, we kind of take, even though the state allows for that, they're operating without a permit. And our legal counsel at that time didn't think that was good, and the council chose to not timely file. And we're probably one of two cities in the state that don't timely file.
So, actually, is it better if you're not agreeing with the licensure to not recommend, but send it on to the state, let the state work with it, versus holding until, well, since we don't know when the license is up, holding on to it until the next city council meeting?
Yeah, I, I would have to go back to my office and look up, go to the ABD website and look up to see when it's, when that license is actually due, that's not something we typically talk about, so I didn't write down those dates. But again, you can deny it, and ABD can just decide to ignore your recommendation because that's who ultimately issues that license.
My, my inclination personally is, is that we follow John's suggestion of the possible municipal infraction course, which may end up in the same, you know, result. I just, I, I like the idea of them having their day before us to argue their case. That's just, I, I'm pretty committed to, to people having a chance to have their say, so.
So, at this time, then?
Do you have a motion then?
I'd be inclined to not give a recommendation until such time as we've followed the process.
Okay.
So, you want to just table it?
I would move that we hold off the recommendation until we've followed our ordinance procedure with them.
And, I mean, we could even communicate to the state that we're pursuing a, you know, municipal.
I'm much more concerned communicating with Roscoe's that they pay attention to what the law is. And this is a law-abiding community, and we expect them to follow the statutes as they're written.
So.
John, do you have a suggestion for, for how we could phrase a motion that would accomplish this municipal infraction procedure?
Well, I think you've given instructions enough at this point to city staff. And I think you have an agenda item, though, that you, that you have to resolve, and you could table that and basically give direction to city staff to pursue, investigate, and if necessary, pursue a municipal infraction. We got to go through the, you know, through the code and make sure that there is, appears to be a violation. But I think we could pursue that, investigate it, and by the next city council meeting, report back to you. Either maybe even have filed a municipal infraction by that point. But I would suggest, unless Wanda sees any reason not to, tabling the agenda item?
Yeah, you can table it, and we'll just not take any action, I can check tomorrow to see when that date is. And if, if it falls before our next council meeting, I'll just call ABD and say we are not timely filing this. And, and yes, they would be shut down, well, I shouldn't say that they'd be shut down, they wouldn't be able to serve. They could still be open, they just wouldn't be able to serve alcohol. And then, of course, that would be up to the police department to kind of police that.
I mean, I, I'm the only council member who's spoken overtly in, in support of this. So, I don't, I don't want us to, to rack up billable hours and, and put our staff to work on a process that is going to, you know, result in the same exact outcome anyway, if, if everyone else seems pretty inclined to just vote to recommend the ABD not renew the license. So, I, I guess I'm waiting for other council members to say whether they're on board with this procedure or not.
I'm waiting for a motion of some sort.
What message does it send if we go ahead and just, for argument's sake, approve the license tonight, but then also move forward with a municipal infraction against them? I mean, is that kind of saying, I mean, it sounds like it's saying two different messages, but, but it's not taking away their livelihood, but it's, it's making our point that we do want something done.
Well, looking through this again, kind of quickly, one thing that jumps out at me is part of our city code, I believe, requires the police chief to do an investigation of an applicant and to report to the council. And he's given you a report here that doesn't sound too favorable to me. And I think it does send a mixed message if you, if you approve it after hearing that. Again, I go back to whether or not you have to vote it down or just, again, table it. But I, I, I do think it sends a, a mixed message and potentially puts the city in a tough spot if we pursued a municipal infraction. What's the next step in a municipal infraction? Now that we've gotten the report. One, me reading through it, making sure that the, that what I've heard fits all the elements of the municipal infraction, and it sounds like it does, and then it would be filing a municipal infraction, which is in magistrate court, put together basically a petition, and it's a civil proceeding. And I, I'd have to look through here, because I think there's also an option to have a hearing before the city council. Sometimes you have that option as, as opposed to going to, directly to a small claims court, so.
Wouldn't it be similar to the, the tobacco violation that we just had?
That, that, that's different from the fact that that is a creature of statute, and it's very specific, dictated by, by the state of Iowa, how those are handled. And maybe there's a similar process dictated by Iowa code, I just need to look, look into it and give you, to be able to give you a good advice on that. But there is, based upon our city code, what I've seen here, there is a process for pursuing a municipal infraction in civil enforcement, basically.
Is there a motion on, on the floor?
Yeah, I have an emotion, no.
There's no motion.
I mean, I.
Given that we don't have any written violations, correct?
We've got juvenile referrals, we've got arrests, not, not of the bar, of, of, no, not of the bar.
So, do you think ABD would even deny because of that fact that we, that the bar itself hasn't been charged with anything?
It's been my experience that ABD is not inclined. I mean, you have to have some pretty compelling reasons to, to deny that license, they would have to have some pretty compelling reason. Several years ago, I was on a, a board to, and there was, there was probably 20 of us that were on a board to help ABD revise some of their licensing practices and revise some of their code sections. And they wanted to hear what, what cities' concerns were. Well, this was kind of a resounding concern was that, you know, cities will deny a license, but then they just go ahead and approve it anyway. So, it's, it's, it is something that there's kind of a history to that, because they are hesitant to take away someone's livelihood. So, I guess I can't speak to what, actually, that they would do with this, but I would, I, I don't know, I, I'll just be quiet.
Well, I, I think, I, I'm ready to make a motion. I, I move that we table item five in the agenda and instruct city staff to inform the ABD that we are not interested in timely filing.
So, we have a motion on the table, to table and notify the IUB?
And the motion is to start the procedure for?
I, I just thought I would, I, I don't know, I thought I'd take care of this, item five first, and then we could have a subsequent motion if we wanted to discuss this civil. I mean, the, the motion, if we, if this motion, if we, if we agree to table it, is going to result the same as if we tell ABD that, you know, we recommend against the renewal. As soon as their license expires, they won't be able to serve, right?
Right, but I don't know when that expiration date is, so we, this may not affect their operations at all, because I, it may not.
But it, but it will get their attention.
It will, it'll get their attention, but you'll have to let them know that you want, really do want to meet with them.
And Chief, what options do you have?
I believe they were notified that this is on the docket tonight, I believe they were notified that I was going to speak against it, and they didn't show up. To me, that speaks volumes.
But legally, what recourse do you have within the law for citations? Or can you be doing active ticketing within the bar for underage drinking and having that be on record? Can you be citing the bar for, you know, for disorderly house, can, you know?
There's other actions, other investigative techniques that we can use that we're going to implement.
Yeah, I, I guess I would encourage, if we're going to take anything to the board, to the alcohol board, I think having things documented, infractions, citations.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know if you contacted the, the state agency and said, as a city, we decided not to renew that permit. What's your step now? Do they contact the bar and say, hey, the city said they're not going to do it, get your stuff in order, we're going to pass it after a probation period to show you're going to staff it, you're going to take care of business? I'd be interested to know that aspect of it.
Okay, so if memory serves, and again, we haven't gone down this road for a long, long, long time, but if we deny it, they're going to ask the reasons why. And so, we'll have to present our evidence and our reasons for, for not approving that license. And then they'll decide, based on that, what they're going to do.
So, currently, we have a motion to table.
To table.
But I have, we do not have a second on that.
I mean, Chief, I hate to tell you how to do your job, and you know how to do your job much better than I know how to do your job. But do we need to change the policing at this point of how we're handling this?
A lot of it is officer-initiated, their bar checks, we're doing it.
Okay, but I'm saying, who are charging in these matters?
Difficult, too. The charge is possession of an alcoholic beverage by a person under legal age. You've seen the bar scene, when a marked patrol car pulls up or a uniform gets out, the universal cry goes out, cops, cops, everybody drops their beer. So, it's tough. Now, back in, in my day, we didn't have surveillance systems inside bars, they've got them now, they've got even a, an earlier heads-up that we're coming before we get near a door. But as I mentioned, too, that we, we've got other techniques we can, we can implement, we will.
I mean, in, in general, like, I, I feel like there's a, there's a, I mean, ticketing a minor for possession is a two-headed monster, right? I mean, it, it's, it's probably good for us if we're building a case to take to the ABD. But if you, you know, if you ticket a 19-year-old for sipping on a Coors Light at a bar, it can affect, you know, their, their application for the next level of their education, it can affect their life for a long time, you know that. And that's why I appreciate that your officers are often in a position where you exercise judgment and discretion in the field rather than pursuing the legal process. I really do appreciate that, that that's something that our officers do. And so, I'm hesitant to, you know, encourage you, hey, please rack up lots of citations so we have a better case. I want you to use your discretion in those moments.
Okay, so I still have the motion, I have no second. I hear no second, motion fails. I'm not hearing any second, motion failed. Do we have to vote on that? No. Okay.
Dies.
It died.
For lack of a second.
For lack of a second. So now we're back to renewal license.
And there is an appeal, we know for certain that there is an appeal process if we were to recommend a denial?
I, I was just, Ross, again, kind of trying to quickly scan here, and it looks like under Iowa Code, Chapter 123, there is an appeal process for liquor license holder. So I, 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 just as a general principle, there's usually some due process here for a license holder to try to appeal a denial of a license like this. You know, what, what the status is of their license during the pendency of that appeal, I don't know, but that's something maybe the license holder has to deal, just deal with.
Yeah, and that's, that's provided ABD agrees with you.
Right.
ABD might just issue the license.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny based on the presentation by Chief Musler.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to deny the renewal of this license. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
No.
Luce.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
No.
Chisel.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Conduct public hearing ordinance 1278, amending chapter 5.28, rental inspections and rental permit fee except, exceptions.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to John Anderson, I think he can explain this probably a lot more clear than I can.
Okay.
Uh, two, two items came up this last year during P&amp;Z, Greg's not here, but.
Oh, Greg, yeah, he's back there.
So Greg, Greg can, can chime in here. But basically, one thing came in, came up about inspections of bed and breakfasts, and I didn't realize Decor is down to so few bed and breakfasts to begin with as part of the short-term rental inspection. And there was a question about whether they should be inspected as part of the, the ordinance that was implemented last year. And to add confusion, our, our city code online had not been updated properly since that ordinance was passed, so we were not exactly operating with the right information. But the bottom line is, under Iowa code, and there's different types of bed and breakfasts, but bed and breakfasts can be inspected by the state. Similar, you know, and this brought up the question, well, our definition of a short-term rental, how does, how does that apply to a hotel or assisted care facility or something like that? So we started looking into it more and we just, we decided to recommend that it, well, one, I think it has to be accepted from our regulations, state-inspected institutions or facilities. And there's certain types of bed and breakfasts that would fall into that, and that's in, that's in the drop box in the proposed ordinance. So state-inspected properties, all properties required to be regularly inspected for health and safety standards by the state of Iowa, including nursing homes, assisted living facilities, hotels, and bed and breakfast ins are exempt from regular inspection. And there's actually part of the Iowa code that exempts those from local inspection because they're, they're inspected at the, at the state level. So that's, that's why that was being added. And I think if I looked up our original ordinance, it actually did exempt some of these to begin with, but this further clarifies that. And then the other thing that came to light shortly, shortly after we passed our ordinance, the state of Iowa legislature in a bill that addressed short-term, not just short-term rental regulations, but other things, it did say that cities couldn't enforce laws against short-term rentals any differently than against long-term rentals. And for the most part, our ordinance, what, there was, there's really no difference in the inspection requirements that we have. However, also buried in there was you can't charge an inspection or permit fee, you can, you can still inspect them and you can still require a permit, you just can't charge a fee. So that's the purpose of the Second Amendment.
For the state, for the state-inspected property.
No, for all short-term rental. And I, I, this code I've got pulled up because I double-checked it here, but it says, a city shall not require a license or permit fee for a short, short-term rental property in the city. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty explicit that, what's in there, doesn't leave any, any really doubt about it. Now, we kind of talked about, well, does that mean you can't inspect them anymore? No, it doesn't say that, just can't charge for it, which, you know, I guess Greg's probably got his opinion on that because it does take quite a bit of time for doing that. But this is different from the bed and breakfasts, and we're not saying that the state inspects a short-term rental in any way. So two different issues, I want to make sure that there isn't confusion there.
There was confusion.
Okay, yeah, sorry. So, so they're, they're, they're really separate issues, and I, you could say the, you could say, I'm not saying it is this way, but you could say the public interest or the public welfare is protected with the bed and breakfast in regards to the state's already doing an inspection, but to be clear, their inspection's not the same as what we were doing. Why the state legislature prohibited the license or permit fee? I, I have no idea.
So these two items are to clarify our building code and bring it to in compliance with what's really listed on the state.
In the state code, correct.
Okay, this, I'll open, this is actually a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this item? Please come forward, give your name and address. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And then it'll be consider ordinance 1278, amending chapter 5.28, rental inspections and rental permit fee inspections, first reading.
I'd move for approval of ordinance 1278. Luce would second.
Moved by Chisel, seconded by Luce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
I'd move to waive second and third, since it's state-mandated pushback, I would move to waive and adopt.
Second.
Moved by Hadley, seconded by Ziddegrun to waive and adopt second and third. Any further discussion?
Just a point of information, curious how many votes we have to have to everybody?
Oh, yeah, because we're missing Emily.
Six, as long as everybody votes yes, you're, it'll pass.
I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Yep.
All right, roll call.
Hadley.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Thank you. Conduct a public hearing on the plans and specifications for 2021 Street Improvement Program asphalt overlays. Would like to give a layout on that.
Okay, so bids were opened on Thursday, and the total project, we had one bid from Skyline Construction for $261,794.71.
Could you say that just a little bit slower?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
And that is just a little less than 1% above the engineer's estimate.
I'd make a motion to approve.
You're still on the public hearing?
Oh, public hearing, all right.
Now, we haven't opened a public hearing. Okay, is there anyone, open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to make a statement in relation to this?
I'll just say that 1% is pretty darn good.
Hearing, hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Resolution 3205, approving the plans and specs form of contract and award a bid for 2021 Street Improvement Program asphalt overlays.
Luce would move 3205.
Second.
Move by Luce, seconded by Carlson, any further discussion? Roll call.
Luce.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider ordinance 1264, approving a request for rezoning of property Arlen-Dalen, Helen Wise, co-executors of the estate of Arnold G. Dalen and Alan J. Dalen and Patricia J. Dalen for land along Old Stage Road and in section 14 and section 23, Township 98 North, range 8 West of the 5th PM, all within the city of Decor, Winnessee County, Iowa, parcels from F1 floodplain to C4 shopping center commercial, third reading.
I'd move for approval of ordinance 1264.
Luce would second.
Wanda, have you had any more, or any one call, City Hall about it?
I have not.
Okay.
Okay, it was motion made by Chisel, seconded by Luce. Leave a question from Carlson, any further discussion? Roll call.
Chisel.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been, it's been a long time, it's probably a long time yet, but I appreciate that move forward from an economic perspective and agricultural and consciousness as far as the river and CPR is concerned, too. Resolution 3204, approving amendment to the 2016 Chapter 28E Fire Protection Agreement. Changes would include a one-year agreement expiring June 22nd. Do you want to give some background, any background on that?
Okay, based on the work session we had last week with Rural Fire, we had a tentative agreement to increase that to 44,000, and then to make it for just a one-year, one-year agreement, and then, you know, starting sometime this fall, work on the agreement for next year. So it would change from 40,000 to 44, and it would just be for one year.
Before anybody makes a motion, I would just like to thank Wanda and Steve and Emily for their work on, on figuring out those numbers and working together with Rural Fire to get that to a, to an agreement.
So after the rural people left at the last meeting, I wasn't able to continue on, would come back from the perspective that they saw that it was helpful for the city to get a little more? I understood they didn't want to be a big jump to cover a bunch, but are they of the mind frame now, more of a regular adoption of 2% or, you know, some smaller incremental? Could you tell from what they said?
I'd probably say smaller.
I think they thought they were being back taxed. And once, once they realized that it was not, we were not being regressive and going back and charging more for past service, that it was a, a cost of living and inflation adjustment based on something from 2016, once that was clear, it was easier to go forward.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, is if, they seem to be of a mindset that they would understand if we thought next year to do a cost of living adjustment to that 44.
Right. Yes, I felt that way.
I, I guess I would encourage you to, as these negotiations happen again next year, to look at the language in that contract. Like, like I said that night, it's about as clear as mud. And so I think that there could be ways to, to simplify that a little more. And I do think that them paying not only part of those salaries, but the benefits that go with that would be appropriate, but of course, that's, you know, for all of you to decide at the end of the day. But I would recommend that something like that be put in that contract as well.
I think you just created work, I think you just created work for yourself before you leave.
Well, not for me.
Wanda won't be here.
But, but it should, it could be drafted, it could be drafted before you leave.
It, it could be drafted before I leave, yes, but.
We should take some of the responsibility for that, too. We'd become complacent in the last four years and really hadn't done anything or asked for anything. So that's, that's on us, and, and I agree, from this point forward, we probably should ask at least for a cost of living.
Yep, yep.
Moving forward, I think that hopefully that set us on the right track, but I don't think they discussed it really, what their thoughts were going forward, but we'll have other meetings with them before our next.
But they didn't, they didn't think the whole thing should be, that they could understand, though, a small increment to be able to get toward.
I don't think they said.
Like any negotiations, they don't want to pay anymore, they absolutely have to. I mean, that's just, you know, human nature, it's their job to, to look out for their constituents, and it's your job to look out for yours. So they're, they're going to not want to pay anymore than, you know, than they have to. So I, I mean, I understand that, that's, that's how negotiations work.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 3206, or 3204, excuse me.
Luce would second.
Motion made by Hadley, seconded by Luce, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hadley.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Okay. Consider Resolution 3206, approving submittal of a grant application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistant Program for new generators for the water department.
Okay, so this goes back to, and actually, that was amended to include the library.
Okay.
But this goes back to that Resolution 3195 that you approved in May that added these things to our FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. So now they are getting ready to submit for these generators at the water department and the generator at the library. So the water department locations are Minna Heights Booster Station, the Industrial Park Booster Station, Wells Number 1 and 2, the Pump House and Storage Shed, that's all one location, the Ridge Road Booster Station, the Ronan Booster Station, and the Rosendahl Lift Station over on Valley View Drive. So the total cost of those generators are 243,000, with the city portion being 36,450. So that's, that's for those water generators. Now, the library, our share of that library generator would be 12,300. Now, we may have to, if you are so inclined to approve this, because those are, that would be the city cost, if you're so inclined to approve the, approve this, we may have to put those in two separate resolutions for clarity purposes, you know, for the state.
We did, we did talk about that this morning, didn't?
Right. I haven't talked to John about it yet, but John, since it's on the agenda, I know it's on the agenda as under one resolution, but can we put it in two resolutions without it violating anything since it's on the agenda for the library as well?
If, since you're voting on something that's, you're just basically splitting one agenda item up.
Into two.
Into two.
Right.
I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, I, I didn't think there would be.
I just wanted to get that clarified.
Yep, yep. So, I mean, so you might want to make two different motions then, if you want to, you don't necessarily have to, but if you have concerns about one versus another, of course, the library, the generator for the library would be coming out of your general fund, and then the city's portion of the water generators would be coming out of the water fund.
So actually, just to be. So actually, just to be clear, it'd be the 243,000 plus 12,300, is that correct?
No, it would be the 36,450, the total.
Okay.
The total, total amount for the generators for the water department are 243,000.
Okay.
So our portion of that is 36,450.
Okay, so the library is included in that amount? No.
No, the library is an additional 12,300.
That's to the 36.
For our, for our share. But like I said, there's two different funding sources for that. The library would come out of the general fund and that would just have to come out of cash on hand and then the library or the water department generators would come out of your water fund.
I, I move, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I move a resolution to be numbered later, approving submittal of a grant application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program for new generators for the water department.
Okay, so that's.
Isn't that, that's what you want, you want to split the water department and the library, right?
Right, so then the, the resolution 36, 3206 will be for the water department and then I'll make 3207 for the, if, but if you want to do it a separate, a separate.
I, I thought that's how you wanted it.
Okay.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yep, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
So, so, okay, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. My question is, is if the res, this resolution, that would be 3207, would that have to be on the agenda or, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, but this motion is for 3206.
Yep.
For the water department generators.
Okay. Okay, that's 3206. Any further discussion?
I just have a question about a life cycle of these things. I mean, I assume that when they break or, or no longer, you know, we're probably going to want to replace them, so I'm just kind of curious, what kind of ongoing commitment to a down-the-road expenditure are we making? And then what are maintenance costs related to them? Do we, I mean, is that information available to us?
I am going to refer that to, where's Todd's right there, or Chopper, one of you two, or our engineers.
So for example, like the 911 sites, those generators typically are that 12 to 15 year range. Most of them have been in probably longer than that, I think, except for the new sites. And I believe that maintenance was around $600 a year, but they're the bigger generators. So I don't think, and actually, I think it was $1,200 a year for all three sites, or four sites for them. And they basically stopped quarterly at the 911 sites to just do maintenance on them and then Sean Snyder and myself do the monthly checks on them. So it's not a significant amount and the longevity is, you know, I don't know how well you keep them up and things like that, it's pretty decent.
There's no mandatory retirement date on them though, or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, our generators out here, I think the one we had before this one was, yeah, a long time. It was a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so I believe we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Chisel.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Okay, now we're looking at resolution 3207, is that correct?
Yeah.
I move resolution 3207 approving the submittal of a grant repress, grant application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program for new, a new generator for the library.
Second.
Motion made by Ziddegrun, seconded by Carlson, any discussion?
Our share is 18,000 and some change.
12,000.
12,000, I'm sorry, there's just been a lot of numbers flying around here.
12,300.
And, and the concern is, is just loss of use of the library in an extended power outage, protection of equipment, what, what, what are we preventing here?
Yeah, well, well, emergency management would be one, for sure.
Well, one would be if, if we had to move our dispatch center up there during times of emergency, then you would have a generator up there to, to cover that in times of emergency.
Flood, if the dike breaks, it moves into the library.
Right. Yeah, it's a backup EOC for our law enforcement as well as dispatch and it also is a city location. So the generator is large enough that would run, I think, almost the entire library except for possibly one of the big AC units, but other than that, it would be large enough to do that. The other important thing is, is that I have the city servers kind of split either at this facility or at the library. And like right now, they're just having a small battery backup there, so if we lose power for extended period of time, we lose half our city servers, so that's the other reason.
Okay, any, any other further questions? Roll call.
Ziddegrun.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Chisel.
Okay, motion carries. Consider proposed parking changes to various streets, I know for a fact that there's some confusion on this. What, let's see, is it the streets about it or did Dave bring, do you want to come up and one of you give explanations for the parking? Is that like, Mikey can do it?
Yeah, I think the main change that most people are talking about is the one over up Fifth Avenue. The reason for that change is, there's been a lot of change in Decorah and a lot of change in that corner of our city in the last couple of years. We've got increased tourism like we've never seen before, so more people are coming around and that's an area that people are at. We've seen a brewery located there and as of recently, the landing eatery is also there. With that increase, we see people parking down streets we've never seen before, so I can't historically say we've had issues there because statistics wouldn't be there. So my recommendation was to knock out three parking spots on Painter Street to open up that street. During normal day-to-day business, a lot of times that's a, that's a basically a one-vehicle street, you're either going northbound or southbound, there's not enough room for two lanes. If you're coming from the north, traveling south to Fifth Avenue, you can sit and wait for a vehicle to come and clear that area before you go. If you're on Fifth Avenue and you turn on a painter and somebody's already coming down, there's no place for you to go but to sit in an intersection. Fifth Avenue is the intersection, that's one of the heavily traveled intersections in Decorah, there's, there's, roadways coming into Decorah. So I wanted to remove the three parking spots to widen that up, to make it safer. Fifth Avenue in that same area, we see on weekends, a lot of times, people parking on both sides of Fifth Avenue, on the north and south side. There's people crossing the street, either going to the landing or going to the brewery. The street is narrowed due to the parking on both sides of the street, so I believe it's also a pedestrian hazard, not just a traffic hazard where we've constricted the roadway.
And so, just to be clear, it looks like the portion on Fifth Avenue is almost from where the ice skating rink entryway is over, I'll say to the west, and then also from the same entryway over to how many spaces going towards the stop sign on Fifth Avenue?
We're only taking out parking on one side of Fifth Avenue, that's on the south side of the street from the basketball parking lot down to the fire hydrant, which is the start of the turn lane. I would say five spots, four spots somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. In relation to this, is it appropriate, we have people that want to speak to that portion and then we can move on to the other, or, what's the council, does that sound okay?
It's fine with me, yeah.
Or can we all agree that we have no problem approving Center Ave and Hively and North Alley before, I mean.
Okay, can do that too.
I think there's no, does anyone have any issues with those two?
Yeah.
I mean, I have questions about Hively and North Alley, but not, not about the other.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't, did, would you like to speak to it? Please come forward. Just state your name and your address and your concerns.
Hi, I'm Pete Blodgett and I am a partner in West Side Dental at 108 Fifth Avenue. So I appreciate you letting me talk to you. You know, we've been there about, almost 15 years, 14 years, I guess, never had a problem. The, you know, the issue is that the brewery and the landing and Dave stopped by and talked to us today and Jeremy stopped by and talked to us today, it was kind of a little late notice kind of thrown at us.
Yes.
So we read it in Paul's news, which didn't show the picture of where the parking was, but my concern is, you know, there's never been an accident there. I agree with Dave that, you know, when it's busy, it is one lane, we, we just go slow and it's been working out and we're going to be kind of penalized by losing three spots right in front of our building. And I don't really think that's fair. You know, I think we need your, your guys' support as businesses, I talked to Pete Espinoza this morning and he's out of town, so he couldn't be here. He was very upset, said that he, you know, had he known that they were going to restrict his parking on those, on Painter and Fifth Avenue, that he wouldn't have built the landing, which, you know, tho, those are great businesses, the brewery, the landing, and they're very positive things for Decorah and I guess we're looking for support from you guys with maybe possibilities of what we can do, not restrict parking, but maybe get more parking on the west side. Patrick McDermott had some thoughts on that issue and he might, he might address those, just make some suggestions and again, you know, it's, these are good problems to have in Decorah, it's growing, it's a popular place, so.
And I did, Pete Espinoza had contacted me.
Oh, he did, good.
Yeah, he contacted me and then I passed it on to Jeremy and the street department too.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that that was.
I'll note, I talked to Pete, or I didn't talk to Pete, but I had messages from him this morning that I responded to as well.
Yeah, I texted him last night and heard from him this morning too, but anyway, Patrick McDermott is involved in our, his wife is my partner too, so he'd like to address a couple issues, or maybe ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just step up?
I'm Patrick McDermott, address is 2708 College Drive. Like he said, my wife is a partner in West Side Dental, I also own the residential property directly across from West Side Dental on Painter. So I was talking to Jeremy Brill this afternoon, I had a meeting with him at 3 o'clock on site and he was unaware that we've already lost some parking on the west side of Painter Street due to the post office has requested that the mailbox has been moved from the house fronts to the street front so that they can drive up and do it by vehicle and not on foot. That took up at least four parking spots right there.
Is that all along that Payne side on the?
Yes.
Okay.
On the west side opposite of West Side Dental.
Yes.
And the landing. So West Side Dental has been utilizing Painter Street for parking for the last 15 years because we have that many employees and that many customers, that coupled with landing and coupled with Pulpa Rock, their employees and their numerous customers requires everybody to park on Painter Street. So with them being taken away, even though it's just three spots, that's three spots that are needed. So then people will be, we're not really solving the problem by painting that yellow, you are, but you're just spreading the issue to another street because the next month, the parking issue will be on East Street where the residents don't want people to park there in front of their houses or, you know. The painting is a short-term solution in my mind, but I did buy that property directly across from West Side Dental knowing that parking was an issue and I have a drawing that I've, I gave to Chad Bird over a year ago and I gave it to Jeremy Brill, it's in his email, for parking solutions that we can create on my property on the corner there that I think should be discussed before we just go limiting the parking spaces that already exist. So it's a bigger issue than I think just painting stuff and trying to open it up, there's big businesses over there, all three of them are growing, so we need to, and I see Don's is here, I'm sure it affects him too because it rips all the way down Painter and then wherever that street is to the north on Iowa Avenue, you know, he's surrounded, everybody in that area that has a business is affected by it, so.
Patrick, are, are you suggesting that the property that you purchased, is that the corner of Fifth and Payne?
Yes.
Painter, excuse me.
Yes.
Would that be a cooperative parking lot within the businesses or are you suggesting it would just be exclusively for West Side Dental?
Depends who pays for it. I'm open to all options, but I'm not, I can't support just saying no more parking because that just spreads the issue. It's a very, it's not even a fix, it's just, it's going to create more problems elsewhere. So, yes, I, I do agree with the police department that Fifth Avenue, I don't disagree that that should be one-sided parking because talking with Jeremy Brill and being in the construction industry myself, road construction, I'd know that that road is not wide enough to have parking down both sides and I do think that's a safety concern, that is a high-speed road compared to Painter. Painter is not an artery as Fifth Avenue is, so I think that we can get more creative on Painter Street and I guess if the city's willing to work with me, I'm willing to work with them and come up with ideas, or at least be able to present the ideas that I already have and drawings that I have that are to scale of how we can manipulate my property on the corner to not only benefit West Side Dental, but be safer for the residents that live in that area and also the landing, pulpit rock and Don's, just to relieve some of the pressure in that area because, you know, there is, you could do more parking on the south side of Fifth Avenue to the park there, which is all in the city's hands, or we can do something on my property too, but I think, I guess I just, tonight would like to not see the approval of the painting happen.
Don, do you have anything? Can you just come up and?
I'm Don Rude, I have 223 College Drive. Traveling all the time with my trucks getting in, in and out of those areas with the parking that's there now, it's, it's really tight. And in this winter time, it gets even narrower because of all the snow packed up, but doesn't get plowed out well enough to be able to travel. So sometimes I can't hardly even get one truck through there without almost scraping someone parked cars. And when you get to the stop sign to turn left or right, whichever way you're going on Fifth Avenue, it's just, you gotta look like 20 times to make sure you can see who's coming because the cars that are parked there are blind spots when people traveling down Fifth Avenue. And if you come off Fifth Avenue onto Painter, then you got those three spots that are used now that take up that area, so you meet somebody and there's not room for everybody there. So for a safety concern, I agree with painting them and get, and looking at other options for parking, you know, just an idea, I know we like the basketball court there, but maybe that should be a parking lot, just a thought. I mean, it's, but there are other things that can be done, but we need to look at the safety, I feel, first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
My, my recommendation after talking with Dr. Willmuss last night as well, I appreciate the, the input of the, the, everybody here. My recommendation would be that we would approve the parking changes on Hively, North Alley and Center Avenue and table Painter and Fifth for a discussion and possible solutions with the business owners, all affected business owners and the potential use of city property to offset the, offset any loss of parking from any changes that we might make for traffic safety. Are you making that a motion, Ross? Yes. I'll second it.
Okay, I want to understand then the Center Avenue, no parking.
Can we vote on the first?
Let's, we have a, we have a motion, just a minute, we have a motion and a second with the definition as far as Painter Street and Fifth Avenue is concerned. Now the discussion.
Okay, why Center Avenue, why are we taking the parking out there for the residents?
Center Avenue is going to mimic Decorah Avenue. There's a one-block stretch where there's no parking during school hours or school days on Decorah Avenue. Center Avenue is going to mimic that same due to the fact of the constriction of the roadway with parking on both sides of the street during the school time.
How about the school come up with a solution for the cars to park someplace off streets instead of us taking it away from residents that may have visitors come and need that because they don't have double-wide driveways that are for cars?
Well, they can park on the other side of the street, they just couldn't park on the one side of the street. You're not taking away all the parking, they might have to walk across the street.
I understand that, but.
And again, that's just during school hours, during school days, during the summertime, that's wide open, just like Decorah Avenue is. And there's, if you drive it, you'll see one of the resident. And there's, if you drive it, you'll see one of the residents has hammered a sign into their tree on the boulevard that says, "Do not block my sidewalk." So I think they might be in favor of us enforcing that, that change.
Are we considering Ross's motion as just an omnibus here? I mean, the Table and approving the other two parking? Are we talking about just Painter right now?
The motion, as it was stated, involved all three.
Yeah.
And then it was seconded.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'll just, a couple thoughts generally about all three items, and Pete Espinoza emailed me and asked me to read some comments about his concern. If we move forward with tabling, I don't think we need to listen to them now. So I guess I'll wait and see how that goes. But I, just in general, you know, I talked to the chief about this earlier in the week, and I think that, you know, when you're considering opening up traffic by, or making traffic flow more smoothly by removing parking spots, it, it seems like a lot of people think that that always necessarily makes things safer. One of the things that I've been learning a lot about as a council member is, is that, that, you know, with, with regard to parking and street design, sometimes it's counterintuitive. Sometimes the less navigable a street is, the more safe it is for people, pedestrians crossing, people on their bikes, because it signals to cars, hey, this is narrow, I shouldn't expect to be able to go down here at forty-five miles an hour. Now, that doesn't speak to Don's concern. He drives big trucks, you know, around. That's, that's his business, and, and he's saying that right now the parkings are, the parking is so constricted that it sometimes makes the work that his business does difficult and dangerous. And I, I do take that kind of concern seriously, but I'm less inclined to sort of worry about people being able to go, you know, unhindered at thirty miles an hour down Fifth Avenue. And I, I guess I don't even mind that much, that people sometimes have to take turns going down Painter up to the point where it's a safety concern like, like Don brought up. So I, I just, I, I feel like there's, there's a, there's a struggle here, and I honestly don't know what to do. Decorah, when it designed its streets a long time ago, spent a lot of money and committed us to spending a lot of money on an ongoing basis because it expected that in many places, there'd be parking on both sides of the street for the sake of the businesses and the residences. And, and so I'm kind of loathe to, to reject the wisdom of, of the people who designed our streets and say, actually, this isn't wide enough anymore. I, I, I think there should be a really good compelling reason to do it.
Well, I think that, you know, when you're looking, at that point, there was dry cleaners there, there was plenty of parking, so with the increase in the economic piece, is huge, but it's in a very concentrated area where there are issues, so it's not like it was when they first designed the street. So it does pay to look at it.
Well, prior to nineteen eighty-one or two, whenever, eighty, whatever it was, College Drive was two-lane, and there was a lot of parking in front of these businesses also.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Where Don's is located, where the Landing is located, the dry, what used to be the laundromat down there. Used to be a car dealership and a carnation dairy. But what these folks have done in the last fifteen to twenty years has renovated that area, because where West Side Dental went in, that was kind of a waste area for us over there.
And I guess, I mean, for the revitalization of an area that was economically underperforming, not contributing a lot of value to the city in terms of tax dollars and economic activity and, and social things for, for our residents, like I, I just feel like we're hearing from several of the business owners, at least, that, that this feels almost punitive. You know, you've developed this area into a vibrant, bustling economic powerhouse for the city, and so now we're going to make it harder for people to shop at your businesses and, and use your services. I think that's.
I think that's why the Table, that's why it's a responsible thing to table. Look at alternatives and look at the recommendations of the, of Chief on intersection safety, not street design as a whole, but intersection safety, where it's a visibility issue. So again.
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion. I just knew that I'd be on vacation next council meeting, so I wanted to say my piece now.
Gotcha.
Okay, so everybody understands what you're voting on at this time. I guess, I think I'll go, but I know, I think I know what it is, but I'll let her.
The motion is to table number one, the recommendation for parking spots on Painter and Fifth Avenue, so you're tabling that, and you're approving the recommendation for Hively Street and North Alley and Center Avenue.
Because the Street Department is painting right now, and if we can get the, if we get this approved, they can get this knocked out before school starts.
I guess I am interested to know, the, the residents on Center Avenue, the four houses that are the most impacted by this, are they aware of this change? And then it'll affect their parking?
I have not notified them, no.
I have not called anybody.
Yeah.
Because there'd be more parking in front of their houses then if we.
Well, I get, I get the feeling that we're trying to solve a problem of maybe school, you know, kids' vehicles and, but I'm sure that some of those people, like me, I leave, I leave one of my cars on the street all the time in front of my house. And if I were to find out tomorrow that I couldn't park my car there anymore.
Oh, in front of their house, where previously they could do that. Yeah. Yeah, that is, that is something to consider.
And I understand the issues on Hively, but where are those people that, now that we're trying to, you know, revitalize the downtown and get the upstairs living and that, where are they to park their vehicles? Because we don't have overnight parking downtown, other than along the street here.
I did, I have talked about Dave and to Jeremy about looking at Hively and how that parking lot in the back can be better utilized. And Jeremy said that they would be taking a look at it where there could be some free parking in what I'll call the very west end of that parking lot prior to the street that goes to the Woolen Mill. I know the one big concern was snowplowing, and to be able to do that, they're doing some of that, but they said that, he said that they would look at that. I've always had a concern in thinking that, that Hively Street is too narrow, even though, there again, I know we haven't had any accidents in that. What they're choosing to do with changing some of that is even narrowing that down a little more for the parking that would be along that street. But I know that, you know, on the off hours, there's a lot of parking spots that are in that parking lot that could be used.
And this change that you're looking at right now doesn't restrict Hively Street, that yellow line on Dayspring Lane is on the inside of the parking lot?
Right, it's, it's just, yeah, I want everyone to understand it's not, he's not restricting the Hively parking, it's the parking that people have sort of started.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, they make their own parking spots.
In, inside the parking lot.
That's correct.
Parking places that people park in.
Right.
And I think it's already marked yellow.
It is. Yeah, we're going to freshen it up.
But people park there anyway.
And post signs.
At one time, and I don't remember ever getting any response back, but we had asked at one time to make Hively one-way and then possibly putting diagonal parking there to get more parking.
It, it does sound like, as they clarify that it's on the inside of Hively, that that discussion should be coming forth, if, if people want to look at Hively on the outside, which is the main street, how that would be done.
Make it a one-way from State Street down to Court.
Well, that would be another discussion to bring forth. So for this one, if you're all clear on what the motion is, are there any other further discussion?
I just, we'll make sure I understand the logic behind the North Alley, that painting the curb yellow, it already is, I guess, you're saying, that, that's right. There does, I mean, it seems to me like there's room for parallel parking there and people to back out of those spots, but maybe I'm not a traffic engineer.
I'm going to, I'm going to pull my second on this motion, because I, I'm not so sure that the Center Avenue thing shouldn't be discussed a little more fully with the neighborhood as well, before we move ahead with that.
Okay. Is that feasible to do that, John? We're still in the discussion.
Yeah, that, that's fine. You haven't called for the vote yet.
Okay. So, we had a motion, and seconded has been pulled. So, what's your?
Well, we don't have to do anything. I'll just withdraw my motion, and we'll just let it die, and we could, because it sounds like we want more discussion on Painter and Fifth. It sounds like Kirk wants more discussion with the neighbors on Center. And Hively is already painted yellow, so they can, the North Alley is already painted yellow, they can continue to paint yellow. We're not holding anything up.
There might be a change on Hively that's up by the State Street intersection.
There is, there is a piece that I think that is up at that intersection that's right by.
That would be a change.
Yeah, that would be a change too.
The one on Hively, ready, Ken?
Right.
Well, there's no motion on the floor, I mean, at least, push us on that one, almost anywhere.
The other thing is to do more, you know, look into this more and bring it forward to this next city council with more clarity. Because you get several things that are.
But, but Ross mentioned that they're already painting the streets right now, and if we could do this, or do you think that's worth doing, or what do you think?
Well, previously, the Street Department has painted the streets. So it's not like they couldn't paint a portion of that. But I guess it's whatever the council sees.
It seems to me that I'm the only person with any objection to the Hively and North Alley thing. I, I mean, I, I'd like to knock that off and then deal with the other two at more lengthy procedure, but other council members, what do y'all think? Just move it on, all right?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Chisel and seconded by Johnson to table and send it to the Street Department for, I mean, not Department, Street Committee for more discussion.
Can we also give directive to, for someone to contact the four property owners on Center?
Right.
I think it's more than four. I think you need to, I was also thinking, you know, the people across the street are affected by it as well. Because then all of a sudden, your neighbors are going to start parking their cars on the other side of the street. So that whole block is, is affected by that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Roll call?
Chisel.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Ziddergren.
Aye.
Okay, that gets us down to City Manager report, Department Heads and Council reports.
Okay. Well, just a cut, just a few things here. We already talked about the American Cares Act money. We will be getting our first payment of that of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. I don't know when for sure, but I got the acknowledgement letter that that should be coming shortly. And then the rest of it, as I understand it, will be next year in calendar twenty-two at some point. And then Jeremy has officially.
And Jeremy's not even here.
Become a certified floodplain manager.
Nice.
So, congratulations to him, and a big thank you to him for doing that. And I think with that, and, and this will come at, at a later time as we go through the code, but I think we'll have to, we should change our, update our code to reflect, you know, permits for that. We're always signed by the City Manager, because we had the City Manager as our floodplain manager. Well, when Chad left.
Don, and, yeah, could you go like a little through the back or outside?
We'll call you for the next committee meeting, Patrick.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I felt that that would be better, rather than with the City Manager, with our City Engineer, that now that we have an engineering staff. And I'm kind of hoping that maybe Tom will also get a certification for this. We'll see.
I'm just dumping that on him. He did not know that. But anyway, so I, there will be some changes probably to the code that will go along with this, as far as approval of, of anything that has to do with the floodplain. And then just one other quick item, and I see John brought this along tonight too. There was a, a statement, an advisory issued by the State Auditor for funds going to nonprofits, to private nonprofits. Well, I did send that to our auditor to get a clarification from the auditor, because I, I wondered what's, what's the difference between private and public? Because I thought some of the places we give to are probably public nonprofits, but in fact, they're not. They're all private. So in order to do this, essentially, we will have to have a twenty-eight E agreement with all of these entities, and we don't have to belabor this tonight because we, we never release those funds till October, so we have, you know, a little time to work on this. I just wanted you to know that this is probably coming. And maybe John wants to weigh in on this a little bit too. According to the auditor, this has really come up because of funding during the pandemic to food banks and other relief organizations that only serve a limited number of people. And so I don't know how this is going to, because right now we do give to the food bank, but I don't know for sure if, maybe we'll continue to be able to do that, because it does give money to just a certain segment. It's not, you know, something that goes to everybody.
So an example would be those organizations, nonprofit, that we give money to in our budget session versus just approving them in the budget. You would probably have to set up a twenty-eight E agreement with those.
That's what I understand, is that there would have to be a twenty-eight E.
I remember the legislation on it.
John?
Yeah, and this isn't new law, and there's always been some tension out there. Sometimes it's arisen with fire, volunteer fire associations, but recently it came to my attention from Kristen with the RSVP program, and then since then, I've, this has just been popping up all over the place. And pretty much with any nonprofit, and the discussion about sunflower, that was one of the things that popped into my head today, when I heard about the Board of Supervisors, and then that they would be coming to the City Council, was, well, do we have to look at a twenty-eight E? And I don't know that it radically changes a whole lot of things, but there, the, the essence of it is if you can make a determination that this money will be used for a public purpose, there still has to be ongoing city or government oversight of how that money is used after it's donated, and the State Auditor recommends one way of doing this is a twenty-eight E.
Okay. I know when I've listened to Board of Supervisors, they've been having the same discussion too, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and I, yeah, so I don't know just how much the Board of Supervisors is going to continue to do that in light of this, but like I said, maybe we can have a committee meeting and, and delve into this a little bit more at a time other than tonight, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. So, and that's, I think all I have.
Yeah, could you, could you kindly direct people to where, if they would really like to be part of the council, how much fund this is and?
Oh, that's right.
That's right, I asked, because.
You did ask me to do that, and it was.
League of Municipality was encouraging councils to make sure that we get the board out as far as.
I, yeah, it was a busy day, Lorraine, and, and I, I, that just went totally out of my head.
Well, and I so appreciate working in partnership with you, Wanda.
Yep. So, anyone who is interested in running for City Council, we of course have a election this year. We have wards one, three, five, one-at-large position, and our mayor position on the ballot this fall. And so papers can be taken out anytime. You can get papers here, you can get papers at the courthouse. You can get them online. Go to the city's website. All this information is on the city's website as well. And that'll give you the number of signatures you have to have for each different position. We've also got a couple of Park and Rec positions on the ballot as well. But our website will give you that information. And papers can start being submitted, if I am not mistaken, I'm going from memory now, but I think it's August twenty-third.
I will, I can partner with you on that. I believe that that's correct.
Okay, all right, good. And then I think it's this, probably the seventeenth of September that they have to be, to be submitted by, and they have to go back. That they have to be, to be, um, submitted by and they have to go back to the courthouse.
Correct.
Um, they can no longer be submitted here to city hall, so they have to be submitted to the auditor's office at, at the courthouse, um, by five o'clock.
Okay.
On that date, which I believe, again, is September seventeen.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Uh, department heads. Okay.
Hey, you've had enough time up at the microphone.
I feel like it's home. Uh, couple of quick things, first of all, I want to thank the Nordic Fest board and everybody associated with the work that went into Nordic Fest this year. Fantastic time, great crowd and everything went really well. I was nervous about the grandstand being moved up to Water Street and how that would affect our residents that live down there, and I think things worked out really well. I think, um, I spoke to the Nordic Fest board midway through the fest with the concerns that I had, and they addressed them immediately and rectified things. And, uh, I don't think we got hardly any complaints from the beverage garden being up there or the concert stage being where it was at. Secondly is tomorrow night, we're gonna celebrate National Night Out, the mayor is wearing our T-shirt. It's a chance for the community to come out and meet the police, uh, talk to an officer, no agendas, just come out and, uh, say hello. We're going to be serving snacks out there, we've got a first-rate jazz band coming up, if you're a friend of jazz, uh, bring a lawn chair out, sit and listen. It's really shaping up to be quite an event, uh, thank Park and Rec for the help with it, there's gonna be games and activities. And Captain Scott Herman has been the driving force behind it.
And they also have prizes.
Yes, they got rental prizes, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good night, tomorrow night, Phelps Park, five to seven.
Superduper. Now.
I just want to let you know, there was the OCIO grant, a technology grant called BIIT. Um, I did get that submitted each, uh, municipality throughout the state and county governments, uh, and we're entitled to ninety-five hundred dollars. So I submitted ours today, got a few laptops coming and a couple of webcams.
Thank you.
Um, I did let, uh, one of the county, uh, emergency management director, Sean, know that if any other municipalities or mayors that didn't have any other staff, that if they need some help getting theirs done, I'd be willing to help them, it's pretty simple, so.
Appreciate that. Anything else from the departments?
Uh, tomorrow, we're gonna be doing kind of a exploratory dig, as you would call it. Back in two thousand seventeen, there was a sinkhole that started up on Vernon Street. And during the process of excavating that and determining what the sinkhole was all about, um, the water main was damaged, um, and was repaired at the time. Recently, that sinkhole has redeveloped, um, the street department has been working on it now, doing some exploratory digging and have found water. So we don't know if the recent sinkhole is a cause of the new water issue or if the water issue is caused by the sinkhole returning. So tomorrow we'll be dealing with that, we're gonna do some digging and exploring and see if we can figure out where the water's coming from and then we'll have to deal with it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Randy? Andy?
Um, yeah, Nordic Fest was a success, I think, want to thank all the apartment heads, um, and all the work that they did. And, uh, it's also nice to see Main Street getting worked on and Dry Run Plaza getting completed and just a lot of good stuff going on right now.
Steve?
Have a SMID meeting Wednesday morning.
Dave? Zitogun?
Two things, uh, first of all, you know, again, staff, Nordic Fest was so, you know, great, um, talked to lots of outs, out of town, lots of out of town visitors. People know what a special thing it is that we have here, I think that's because people are really invested in this community. It's, it's good to see evidence of that week after week in council too, uh, so thank you, um, it makes me proud to be part of this town. Speaking of Nordic Fest and pride, I came in second in the ludofisk eating competition. And I just want to apologize to, no, 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 we only applaud the top of the podium, uh, we're not accepting second place, I want you to know, training started the day after the competition. And, uh, and I hope to see all of my fellow elected officials, uh, right there with me next year, making a fool out of yourselves, it's not as bad as it smells.
I'll support you in your time of need.
Anyway, I, I promise to do better. The, uh, the last thing is, I, I'm just gonna follow up on what, um, Emily brought up last council meeting regarding the possibility of a nonpartisan commission for, um, kind of overseeing the, the, the process that, that Wanda spelled out to us about reapportioning wards, um, I'm just generally in support of, of as much openness as possible. Uh, since it's not in the agenda, I couldn't talk about it any other ti, any other time, but, um, uh, short of that, I wonder if maybe it, it might be useful to, uh, to have it on the agenda sometime where we invite Wanda to just explain the process to us and, and walk us through it, um, just, just for the sake of, um, community or demonstrating to the community that we are sort of open and, and, you know, nonpartisan about this as, as possible.
Dave, Ross?
Uh, I've been working with Chopper and the telecommunications utility board. We've been trying to find ways through public-private partnerships to bring fiber to the home. It's been, it's been quite a challenge, it continues to be a challenge, but I just want the council to think hard about, um, as we look at our, uh, COVID funding from the feds, that the, uh, that the support for fiber was an eighty percent vote. And it was over eighty, yeah, it was something like ninety, and we haven't been able to pull the trigger on it because we haven't been able to find revenue and we were hesitant to bond. Uh, if twenty-twenty showed us anything, it's that we need better, faster internet and the OCIO, the OCIO maps, um, didn't look good for Decorah. So if, i- if we want to get something done, the money is probably gonna have to come from us. Uh, if we ever get grant, more grant money or there are other opportunities down the road, um, I think, I think that would be great, we could reimburse ourselves. But I don't think that there's any more bang for the buck, uh, for that COVID relief funds than fiber to the home. We can piggyback on it for our water and sewer, uh, metering down the road, um, but, uh, telecommu, yeah, bringing telecommuters to our city. After school, um, just shopping and video and everything, uh, just revolves around internet. And since we have worked diligently for years to try to figure this out, I think it's time for us to, to step up. And I hope we would all encourage, uh, each other to, to see that as a, as a viable use of the money.
Okay, Kirk?
Uh, we'll be having, um, personnel committee meetings sometime soon to discuss going forward with our search. But I'll be talking with Wanda about the best times to do that and our consultants and so on and get that thing moving.
Okay. Um, I, the only thing that I have is that Jared Essa has, uh, put in his notice of resignation for planning and zoning. So there will be an opening on the planning and zoning, uh, if you are interested in that, uh, you can get the application online, call down to city hall and get information. And I want to make sure that I get that message out. Anything else? Hearing none? Okay, thanks for the meeting, I appreciate it.